All right, we're going to call to order our special meeting about 29 minutes delayed, but Wednesday, May 29, 2024, at 4:29 PM. Called to order Declaration of Quorum, seven members present. Welcome, everybody. Thank you all for being here and staying. Item C, discussion and possible action on board policies and board operating procedures regarding citizen comments. As you guys are aware, at our past board meeting, we had some hearing of citizens which we have not encountered. And it was one of those situations that as a board and then as myself, board president, I am held to a standard based on the TASB policies and procedures that are in place. And unbeknownst to me of the speakers coming to the meeting, we were kind of in a situation which we had to address some scenarios and speakers to make sure that we do our due diligence to make sure folks are following policies and procedures that are in place in regards to situations as it pertains to personnel within the district. And we had to, in a sense, halt some speakers from some of the comments that they made due to the fact that the policies and procedures that were in place were not followed by those folks. And so the plan and why we are meeting here today on this item is to kind of review that and figure out how to go forward. Because everybody that works in CSISD has the right to have any processes and procedures and any concerns or any matters that concern them to be addressed properly per the CSISD policies and procedures that are in place, more specific, our grievance process. So that is the reason for this first item here. You'll see two suggestions that we have visited with TASB and other folks that have these recommendations in how we can move forward to make sure that we are doing our due diligence as a board, to make sure that we can hear our hearing assistants and properly get that feedback, but at the same time, make sure that the procedures in place that are there as it pertains to personnel within the district are also followed as well. So read over those, the complaint and concerns, and then obviously the procedures. First one, presiding officer designated shall determine whether an individual addressing the board has attempted to solve a matter administratively through resolution channels established by policy. Not the individual shall be referred to the appropriate policy to seek resolution. Employee complaints, DGBA, student or parent complaints, FNG, public complaints, and GF. So the next one, as far as procedures, we discussed this, Dr. Harkreiter and I, and we have investigated that since last Tuesday on kind of what else other boards do, whether that be school boards, whether that be city council boards, whatever that looks like. We are not here to say you can't come speak as a citizen or community member of CSIS. That's not what we're here to do. We want you to come speak if that's what you want to do and you feel like you need to. However, the district should be allowed to make sure that whatever that topic is, that they have an opportunity to have a conversation about it, to make sure both parties, the district and community, are both privy to the concern or the matter at hand. And so that's why we're looking to possibly implement this. Individuals who wish to participate during the portion of the meeting designated for public comment shall sign up with the presiding officer or designate by 10:00 AM the day before the meeting and shall indicate the agenda item or topic on which they wish to address the board. So that's out to you guys. I'm going to open it up for discussion or comments, and we can kind of move through this.
Let me give you all a little bit more background real quick. I visited with our attorney about this a couple of different times. This would be adjustments to board operating procedures. This is actually a hot topic across the state. There is multiple lawsuits involving board policies dealing with public comments. So the recommendation of our attorney was not to change anything in policy but our operating procedures, because we currently already have policies in place for complaints and grievances. So the reason why the day before the board meeting, it gives us time to vet what the speaker is wanting to address and if that complaint or grievance process is the route they should go versus speaking publicly. So it gives our team an opportunity to visit with potential speakers, maybe if we've got some clarifying questions and can point them in the correct direction. And so just wanted to let you know what her advice was for us moving forward if we wanted to take any action.
And I appreciate that, because I know we've had discussions, to your point about the theme of we got to modernize, we got to do the most appropriate things. I like that it's in line with municipal governments. And I know me and you, Mr. Horak, have talked about, a lot of times, people bring very valid concerns or issues that we're not aware of, and we as a board have to sit here very mute and stone-faced. And this is great, because it benefits the administration allowing us to address the issue. And actually, if the parent or citizen wants something addressed, let's them get feedback almost instantaneously. And I think to the salient issue, my understanding when we interrupted was that that parent was interdicting their right to actually address the way they wanted to by not doing it appropriate form. They were, I can't even write the old term, but they're electing themselves out of the proper procedure to achieve the ends that they were talking about. So I think it's good. I think it's modern. It's the common thing to do for a professional organization. And also, it's more effective to achieve the ends, which we want to hear things as a board, and the citizen wants action to be taken. I think that's more appropriate. I would just amend that first line. I would recommend just the presiding officer shall determine. And then I think that's, I'm fine with all the other language.
But I think the board has to take ownership, so the presiding officer determines if this is handled administratively or not.
I personally like this. I want to clarify, though, we're not limiting them to speaking only on items on the agenda, because I do think it's important for people to be able to bring us, like the band director, those people coming and bringing things to the board. So I like how this is worded. I like the change.
Well, and that was maybe my question is, it says the presiding officer, but what, I mean, what are going to be the determining factors on whether we then allow that person to speak or not speak? You see what I mean?
I think that's the question on the presiding officer or designate, because if you move to the 10 o'clock before the board meeting, I would be the designate making the decision, because let's say Jeff's out of pocket and I can't talk to Jeff on if, I mean, it's pretty simple. If you, I got a topic, I'm mad at a teacher at X school, okay, then you need to go the complaint grievance process. It's pretty simple, the process you need to go through versus coming to speak to the board. If it's a gray area, consultation with our attorney. But most of them are going to be pretty standard of what we're going to do. We can make it work regardless.
I've got several questions. So first of all, whether it's the presiding officer or the designate will determine whether an individual addressing the board has attempted to solve a matter administratively through resolution channels established by policy. What happens if they have attempted to solve a matter administratively through policies? Are they not allowed to speak? Are they allowed to speak?
They could be allowed to speak. You would have already heard it in a level three. But, I mean, anybody can come speak pretty much on any topic that they would like to as long as they're not derogatory. And if they followed our current local policies, they could lose a level three and then still come talk about it if they feel like it's unfair. Because we can't limit, that was the biggest deal on the attorney. You cannot limit the scope of what they want to talk about. However, the mentioning of names being derogatory, absolutely. And that's why the recommendation was to go towards current policies you have in place versus if you tried to set a new policy, chances are, in her opinion, you would be challenged legally on it. And she's just said it's a slippery slope. Go to the policies you already have.
So if I have a level one and I lose that grievance, and I decide that, then I'm out of luck as far as coming to talk to the board?
If you're in the level one, you've got to go through level two and level three. You've got to go through the entire process.
I have to go through that entire process before I can come talk to the board of trustees.
Correct. That's why the policy is in place.
In regard to that topic.
Correct.
Okay.
But if it's on the agenda, it's different, correct?
Do we, then is Mr. Decker right that we, the individual would lose if they did decide to speak? Because I'm, because there, I guess, can we, one, restrict them officially illegally?
Yes, absolutely, you can restrict.
We can restrict them, even if they want to.
That's why this is in place, correct. If you're in a level one and you lose that, so you file a level two, you will not be allowed to speak to the board, because you're in our policies and they have not went through the entire process. After the process is over and the level three is over and you wanted to come back and speak to the board, you could.
And how about the other way around? If they come and speak before a level one, like maybe?
Well, that was my.
Right. Are they officially allowed to come, then do a level one afterwards? Did we have that?
If you approve these changes, they would not be allowed to speak until they went through our current policies.
So they'd have to go all the way through a level three?
Correct.
Which is the policy in place.
Hence, what happened the other night, we've got a teacher complaint. They would not have been allowed to speak if this was in place, because we have a parent-student complaint process that they have to go through. And because ultimately, if your goal is you want to speak to the board, you get that opportunity after you go through level one, two, and three. There's a chance you could get to a level two and decide, you know what, I'm satisfied, I'm not going to go to level three.
I feel like it protects the rights of the district employees and the rights of the parents, that they're getting the most effective. Because my worry, and I get where you're getting, Ms. McAdams, that I don't know if they came and complained to us by my reading, if I had a parent come give me a complaint, and then it gets through level three, I have to accuse myself. So my worry was to preserve his rights and standing, that now by complaining to all seven of us, he might lose his level three complaint. But it's also protecting the right of the teacher as a private citizen, as an employee, that it gives Jeff or the designate the opportunity to say, hey, this is the more appropriate way to handle it. And then also, you did very well with a young man who didn't know what defamatory was. You can't call somebody out by name like that. I think just being able to kind of, or we're not restricting them. There is a process and process. My goal here is that the citizen or the parent gets the remedy, the best route to the best remedy that they're approaching us for.
But that's not our responsibility. And they, we're basically denying, we're denying that, we can obviously put restrictions, I think we should, in the policy as far as derogatory comments and so forth, but to tell somebody, you cannot come speak to your elected officials about an issue until months, potentially, after the issue has occurred. I just, I have a, I guess it's civil libertarian, I just have a.
Another way to frame it is 99% of the time of people that speak at public comments, it's no jurisdiction of the school board, regardless of their complaint. It's not in your purview to solve their problem. It is in district and campus administrative's purview to solve the problem. That's all you're doing. You're putting, they come and complain to you, there's no interaction, you're not going to say anything back, and they sit down after three minutes. So what has it solved? They've been heard, but there's been no dialogue. And a lot of times, when folks come and speak, they've never even come to us. And so this is a process for us to try to solve an issue prior to the board hearing, because we're the ones who are supposed to solve it.
Yeah, but that's the parent's choice or the citizen's choice.
Right, but the district also has a policy in place for that matter that you need to follow.
Well, and I feel like.
You don't get to jump the policy in place for complaints and concerns and just jump to the board.
Okay, so we're saying as a board that you cannot come and complain to the board?
No, I didn't say that.
Well, it gives opportunity to the president to let them know there's a better way to achieve what you're trying to achieve. If they just want to come and complain, then they can come and complain. But if they actually want.
No, this says they can't.
No, no. If you're going to come and complain about a personnel within the district, within the district, there's a policy in place. If you're going to come and complain about the district.
Right? Because, and I think that's what Josh is getting at, too. We're not talking about a blanket policy that says, whatever we just decide, we can't, you know, the designate decides, the board's not going to hear. This is for a specific situation that deals with the rights of our staff and employees of our district.
It only deals with employee complaints, DGBA, student or parent complaints, FNG, or public complaints, and those three policies. That's what this, let me say recommend, this option is available for you for those three areas.
Okay.
I still think it's very open-ended. I mean, that is, obviously, what happened the other night was horrible for the teacher, for all of us here, and we, I think we need to try to figure out a way to have it never happen again. But I'm also hearing and agreeing that, I mean, I think a citizen should have the opportunity to come and bring a complaint to us. Now, if it is a personnel issue, or, I mean, is there a better definition of what exact issues would need to be, would need to go through our level one, two, three complaint system?
These are listed this way, because these are the three policies we currently have in place that we would refer a potential speaker to go that path prior to speaking to us.
And to Josh.
Because without it, if you don't do it, then it's, you're going to be stopping a speaker again or trying to stop a speaker again. And I guess, I guess the question is, do you want a problem solved or not? If we want the problem solved, we're the ones that can solve the problem for them, potentially.
And that's why, Josh, I agree with you. The elected official, that's why I do think that it has to hang on one of our heads to make that decision of, does it fall into these policies? There is accountability. But to Kim's point, it's time, place, and manner. There is an appropriate way to do this.
But when I read this potential change as a citizen, it looks to me like if I have a public complaint, that I have to go through Jeff or a designate before I have an opportunity to speak to the board. So I don't, if, I don't necessarily have a problem with the idea of if it is a complaint against an employee, it has to go through that particular procedure. But this is so broad that, from a First Amendment standpoint, from a, we need to hear from citizen standpoint, I think it just goes, it goes over what's required.
Is it all three or just policy GF?
Well, I don't even know, an example. We had parents come in and complain about facilities, right? What if they, I mean, they felt like that was their complaint that they wanted to make? Then we would determine, I mean, how would that proceed? They would have to.
Correct. It's a gray area. If it fits in and the designate or presiding officer decides the path to go through is the complaint process, then that's where they would be put into.
The policy in place is it has to be related to an agenda item, correct?
No.
No. Correct.
And then, Josh, my understanding, the legalese, that public complaints clearly says what you're worried about. We may not confine, or we may not restrict a citizen airing complaints. So that's the governing policy is GF. But then, if Jeff determines, somebody brings complaint, says this is about an employee, then this allows the president or the designate or the officer say, hey, under policy DGBA, this is not the appropriate form. Now, then if they want to come and just grandstand, but then they're not availing themselves of the resolution for student, for the employee complaints. But my reading of FNG and GF is supporting what you're saying. So I don't think it's, I mean, maybe it's just overly summarized, but then because of GF, we're saying that we're separating the two between employee complaints, which have a procedure that Tim's talked about. But if you've got a general complaint like the crosswalks or the military child month, that falls under FNG, and so this is the appropriate form. That's my reading.
Yeah, and if we wanted to do a change to the policies or the procedures that says if you have an employee complaint, you have to go through the grievance procedure first, I'm completely okay with that.
Right, but it's already in the policy, so I don't have to reiterate the policy. That's what I'm talking about. Because if you look at GF, it takes you all the way through complaints, and then you follow it all the way down, and then it talks about level one, level two, level three. So I don't have to line item everything in the policy, I just have to list the policy. So I'm listing policy GF, and I'm saying we have to follow that.
Yeah, and I just thoroughly disagree that we're going to deny a citizen the right to make a public complaint for anything other than a specific employee issue.
That's the way I'm reading it. GF specifically says, so when you read the stipulation, the last sentence is your legal context. All right, and maybe it's poorly constructed.
Well, it is poorly constructed. That's what gets you sued.
Okay, so.
Poorly constructed operating.
So we'll go back to the lawyers, but then I would agree, then I agree with you on that. Because my reading of this is, it is governed by, or public complaints GF, like Jeff said, we cannot restrict anybody complaining to the board. However, there's two buckets, so to speak, of complaints. There's a formal employee complaint, as we experienced last week, under DGBA, that outlines the policies with which to address it. I would agree with you. If the parent's like, you know what, I want to get up and complain, because I think the public needs to know about that then, but then they are recusing themselves, I don't know if I used the right word, but they're electing themselves out of the policy set forth in DGBA.
Yeah.
And I think we owe it, and that's why I say the procedure is what I like. We, as a board, as elected officers of the community, are making sure, I do think our job is to achieve the desired intent of the citizen. So now, we're here to say, if you come to us and you complain, we can hear you, but we can't do anything now. But if you do really want this fixed, I refer you to DGBA. And then, yes, like you said, if they don't like the way it comes, then they can come and blast us. But they can't blast individual employees.
And I think my issue is with the wording also, in really having that clarity made for somebody who wants to come speak with an issue, yes, they're going to get a review from us and, I guess, some feedback, but I would like it, them not to have to dig through policies to figure out exactly, you know, what they should be able to talk to us about versus, you know, what they need to.
Okay, several of you asked for a change. I visited with the attorney. This was the recommendation for the change. So there's not another recommendation, changing our current policies advised against, because we currently have policies in place. So this was the compromise to try to get something of substance for you guys to adjust the earlier timeframe to sign up, to give our team time to figure out exactly all the information we needed in order for Jeff or however you want the potential operating procedures adjusted.
Dr. Harkreiter, I have the utmost confidence in the administration, but that's another issue of concern that I have is now somebody's going to have to go through the administration in order to come and speak to the board.
Just like repealing your property taxes. There's a process, time, place, and manner is the three-part test. And there's a, if you want to complain about an employee in DGBA, there's a proper time, place, and manner.
Blaine, I am completely on board with, if you have a complaint about an employee, you have to go through the grievance procedure. But this, the rest of it, this idea that I've got to go through, if Mr. Horak decides that Mr. Harkreiter is his designate, and I've got to go through him before I can get up on that podium and speak to the public and speak to the board of trustees, that, I mean, that's the kind of stuff that I just, I have a complete philosophical difference of opinion about.
I would agree, but that's not what I'm reading. It just gives the administration or the board a chance to see what's coming.
So what you're saying is you see an opportunity to seek a resolution before coming here? Does that make more sense? I'm just, to clarify.
Yeah, no, agreed.
What Blaine is saying is that it's giving them the opportunity to come here and try to seek clarification before they come and speak to us. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
But it doesn't restrict them. If they still choose to, they can, nothing's saying you can't come and talk.
Well, and it says the presiding officer designated shall determine whether an individual has attempted to solve a matter administratively.
Based on the policy already at play.
So again, if you determine that they have not.
It sounds like you don't agree with the policies we currently have.
No, I don't agree with denying a citizen the right to come speak to us, or even hampering that.
Right, but if there's a policy in place, there has to be some kind of order, check, and balance. And with a policy in place, if you come with a formal complaint, but you haven't followed the policies or checks and balances that are in place, then that doesn't allow you just to come up and speak freely without.
Jeff, the, oh, sorry.
Oh, you're fine.
I'm just, the idea that governmental entity is saying that that does not allow you to have the right to come speak freely.
If you don't follow the policies and procedures in place?
Yeah, that's what, that's what public comment is for, is for people to come and share their thoughts, their concerns, their complaints.
So why do we, so we should just get rid of our level, our grievance process?
No.
Why? If we're going to allow people to come up and talk, and that, I'm just hypothetical, if we're going to allow what happened on Tuesday to hap.
I didn't say we should allow what happened on Tuesday.
Okay.
I've said several times now that if it involves an employee complaint, they should be required to go through the grievance procedure. But if they have a complaint about the, you know, how many crossing guards we have, they should have every right to come and talk to us about that.
And they can. They can still do that. They're going to put in their public comment, here's my topic, we'll look at it and go, sounds good.
And what if you say it doesn't sound good?
Well, and that will be the question where I go to administration, because I'm not management, I'm not oversight, and go, have y'all addressed this? Is this the first time you've heard of it? Hey, here's, here's the concern. And then that's administration's job, as how I understand it, to reach out to the individual, have a conversation. And if the person doesn't like the resolution or the feedback, then, okay, you can come visit, but we've got to be able to have the opportunity to resolve before we have someone come up here and drag a person through, whatever you want to call it, just because it's First Amendment right. I get it. And that's why, that's why I was hands tied on Tuesday.
Yeah, you did great.
I understand. It's not about whether I did great, it's about the fact that you can come talk and you can come tell us, but us not knowing what the process, or knowing that that process was not followed, the level, the grievance process, does not allow you to have a conversation with a principal and then have a conversation with an administrator at central office, and then maybe you didn't get an answer you liked, or you don't agree with what the, what the resolution was, if there was one presented, so now you just jumped to the board. That's not the process, and that's not the procedure in the policy in play. That's what I'm getting at.
The other part is, most people that come and speak at board meetings have no idea. They, many people feel like they're going to talk for three minutes and sit down, and then you guys are going to talk about it and make a decision. That's not, they don't even know the processes. So what it does do is give us an opportunity to explain what those processes are and the proper venue. And in the end, they go through, if it qualifies to go through the grievance process, great, they want to come talk after. I mean, they're going to get their chance with the board, which is what they want.
Ultimately, we want to help people, and we want to solve problems, and I personally feel helpless half the time when people come speak, because we can't speak back. So that's why I would like y'all to have the opportunity to try to address some of the issues before they just come to the board and see if we can help them, whereas, like you said, we just sit here and stare at them, they go sit down, and we can't discuss it.
But it's not an either-or situation.
That part is true, which is why all our emails are public. So it's not as though we're not going to hear from anyone anymore.
This usually less, a more innocuous kind of scenario. Let's use a less, a more innocuous kind of scenario. The, brought to our attention, the military child, and it was already kind of mid into that month, so we can't really take any action. So she, that, that parent would bring it up, Jeff would say, hey, this isn't on the item, and this is not an employee complaint, okay. But, you know, Dr. Harkreiter says, hey, we're open to it, this is not the right time, because, you know, and they're like, okay, so they, they have two choices. I like that, nah, I'm not going to comment then, because I trust they've had a chance to engage the administration, or they, you know what, I think we need the last three days of this month to be recognized, that nothing's preventing them from coming up and talking.
I mean, I think, I think what triggered this, obviously, was what happened last Tuesday, and the fact that, that we don't want our staff to be treated in a way that's not fair, right? We want them to have a chance to have their fair hearing as well, right? That's a very specific situation. And so what I'm hearing Josh say, which I also agree with, is we don't want to create a situation where it sounds like any complaint is having to go through administration, because we're, we're a board, and we're elected officials, and we should be able to hear complaints. So I know that we're saying, our policy says this, and this, and this, but I do think that the words that are down on this piece of paper could lead people to think, well, they're saying that any complaint that I want to complain about has to go through this other process. And, and, I mean, I'm with Josh in saying, I just think we need to be really, really clear, because I, I think what, what caused some of us to ask questions after that meeting was this very specific situation, and I don't want this to become something that then says, hey, we're going to restrict a lot of other things as well.
So my thing is, is, and we can take what happened Tuesday, we can take anything, any comment that has happened up here during our hearing of citizens. What is the ultimate goal of anybody that comes up here to, what is their ultimate goal when they get behind this microphone? Is it for the board to hear their, their concern?
I don't think that's our concern. They have a right to speak to us.
I agree, but is their ultimate goal, I'm coming to the board meeting because I want my concerns, my items, my situation, my matters, to be heard by the board?
Maybe.
Okay.
Maybe they want, maybe they want the media to hear it, maybe they want people in the audience, I don't know.
Okay, but in this, in this body here, of what we are as the school board, that's how I have to take it. You're coming to speak to the board? Because that's what, hearing of citizens, you're coming to speak to the board. I have to take it, you're wanting us, as the seven, or whoever's here at that, that night, or at that meeting, to hear what your concern is. So I have to take that as, as what it is. That being said, when we look at it, whether it's a complaint, whether it's a compliment, whatever it looks like, that's how I'm going to take it. However, if it is a complaint, then there is a policy in place that you need to go through, because if your ultimate goal is for the board to hear it, we have a policy in place for the board to hear it. You just have to go through it. It's not whether or not you get to or want to, you get to go through it. We're not restricting you from going through the grievance process. There's not one person in here that's going to restrict that. But that's the ultimate goal, is to get to the board so that we hear it.
I, I think maybe I'm not explaining myself well, because when it comes to grievances against employees, I, I completely am in agreement with the, this addition or change to the operating procedures. It's, it's the more broad student and parent complaints, public complaints, so forth, that worries me.
So is it the wording? This is not the procedure, so should we table it for another...
That's what I wonder, too, because I think you explained it...
Like Dr. Harkreiter said, this is from an attorney. This is illegal.
I know, some are idiots.
You're, you're wanting to have employee complaints only.
That, that, well, what I would like to do is table it and give us more time to, to review the DGBA, FNG, and GF, and, and possibly to work the wording a little bit.
A second.
Of the policy?
Of this potential change in the policy.
This is a procedure, but yes.
Because FNG, the first thing it says in this policy, the terms complaint and grievance shall have the same meaning.
We need to look at that, too, then, because I, I, I just, I have a...
I, again, like I said, I do 100% think we need to make some change, and I also, though, don't want it to happen too quickly, where we swing so far that we are making more of a limit to our constituents' speech than, than we really intended, and we make it harder for them to come communicate to the board or who, for whatever purpose they have for coming here. Again, we have got to do what we can to prevent what, you know, what happened Tuesday from ever happening again, but I mean, this is first, I've seen this, and I would be in favor of giving us a little more time, too.
I agree.
I do like the idea of the second part, which we haven't talked as much about, about moving it to where they have to, you know, sign up by 10:00 the day before. I do think there's value in us being able to say, not us, I won't be the one standing there, but that process to be able to be explained to them so they understand, like, if it's not on the agenda, we're not going to be able to respond. I think those are all really positive things. It's just the, it's just being careful about how we, we limit it from that point on, that, that I just think we need to be careful of.
And maybe it's just clarifying what, a little bit in that statement, but to me, it, it just seems like we are, it's too, the way it's worded, very strong limiting of...
Which statement?
In which statement?
Yeah.
The first statement specifically, that everything, that we will get to determine who can speak to us.
I think the fact that...
We being the admin, and I think...
Yeah, or more directly, the admin.
That the admin can, exactly.
That the fact that we're very high-context individuals on this committee, the citizens not, like Josh is, and Kim are saying, if the average citizen's not reading this and coming to the same conclusion that we're debating right now, I think needs to be reworded.
So I have, I'm understanding that we need to be more specific about policies DGBA, FNG, and GF in our resolution there? Is that...
No, the complaint concern, I think the, the fact that there is not a lawyer here, I think that's why we need to table, so I moved to table this motion for...
No, that's fine, I don't have a problem with it, I'm just, I'm just trying to understand.
For me, my motion would be, so I'm making a formal motion, that we table just the complaint concerns, bullet one, for further, further consideration, and, and I'd like legal to give us options.
In regard to, agendas get posted...
72 hours.
So, you're typical on Friday, right? And so they...
Or Tuesday meeting.
Yeah, so the, so, agendas get posted on Friday, the, so a citizen would have to, by 10:00 a.m. on Monday, let, let, sign up somehow to speak at the Tuesday board meeting?
The way this is written, correct. And Austin's already thought about a way we'd streamline the process, you could sign up online to make it more convenient versus having to come in. You wouldn't have to come into the office.
If we did approve that part of it today, would, when would that become effective?
It's just operating procedures, so we would change our operating procedures, which is just an internal document, basically, then we would get the word out publicly of, of the change in our procedures relating to public comments, and the timeframe.
So I, I think this is important, which is why we shouldn't be hasty, so, previous question.
You know, another, another point, if, on the complaint and concerns, and you just changed the procedures piece, it's still going to give us the information of potentially, and topics, that we could call and talk to the individual, and we could make them aware of the complaint and grievance process, they could choose whether they wanted to go that route or come, and so that could potentially be a compromise. By the earlier time, it would allow us to kind of vet and inform some folks, that, hey, you're more than welcome to come, understand that it's not a board's decision, but here is a policy, if you want to go this route prior to. And then we can inform, and that really, you wouldn't have to change anything with operating procedures outside of the earlier sign-up date, and that could potentially be a workable solution.
And is, is this timeframe, I think y'all made reference to it, that a lot of other governmental entities...
Just seen some, you know, and the thing, I think it does is, you know, the day of a meeting, up until a minute before Jeff hits the gavel, we've got a, a blue card drops in, the first time we're laying eyes on it is Jeff's calling their name. But yeah, multiple districts have similar policies.
Are they kind of on that same schedule, where agenda goes out Friday, meetings are on Tuesday, or...
Many are, some Monday meetings, a lot of districts have a Monday meeting, so it actually goes out on Thursday, I guess. Mm-hmm, yes, sir.
And I like that it's what our city does, so it shows there's a local appetite and habit to this. That's right, so, withdraw my motion, but, because it's, I, I agree with Dr. Harkreiter, there's two issues for me. So I guess bluntly, I don't mind, I'm in favor of, of the procedure change today, but I'm not in favor of the wording of the complaint concerns.
Yeah. What, what time do the agendas get posted? I know we get them by email.
Before Kerry leaves that day, so 4:30, or 4:30-ish.
And keep in mind, we had a formal motion made.
What's that?
You made a formal motion.
He withdrew.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean...
I wrote it out.
I, I, I mean, this part, I don't have necessarily any problem with, other than...
This part is which part?
The procedures part.
Yeah, I was going to say, I agree with Kim.
Other than the, you know, maybe noon, instead it's just to give somebody a little bit more time, but I don't know, from the district's perspective, and, you know, the, the procedure part of it, yeah, if that's, makes a difference one way or the other, but...
You're just thinking somebody may not be really, if this comes out late on Friday, they may not be looking at it till Monday morning, and then give them a little time.
No different than we do, I mean, they have all weekend, and we need to give the district time.
I feel like if they're wanting to speak, they're, they're looking for it.
Yeah.
Sure, sure.
And the city, it's my knowledge, city hasn't added complaints about their process, that's why I think it's better analog to keep it local. It works for College Station, it works for Bryan, so I think it'd work for us.
And I appreciate your comments, Dr. Harkreiter, that even, just with that, you know, prior, say, call and warning, right, or, you know, knowledge of what's coming, is that, that there can be some discussion of at least what, you know, what the policies are, so we can kind of tackle, to me, the important part of the first one, you know, informing people about our policies, but still, they are completely open to, to decide what they want to do and proceed on their...
Correct. We basically have the conversation without necessarily a change in operating procedures. It just changes what we do, because we'll have the information prior to the board meeting.
And obviously, if those people do not want to speak with you, they do not have to, right?
If they really want their problem addressed, they will.
Should, I hear you, yes.
If not, then they just want to talk for three minutes, then everything stays the same, unfortunately.
And I think what we're trying to encourage is to handle this at the appropriate level, because oftentimes, that doesn't happen, where we hear from people that are upset about something that happened in the classroom, well, did you start, you know, my question is, did you talk to the teacher? Did you talk to the principal? And oftentimes, that doesn't happen. So I think this gives us, gives the district an opportunity to handle those situations when they arise, because a lot of times, people do just want to go straight to the top.
Yeah, absolutely agree.
Yes, and I think that would help do that, I appreciate that.
So with the, the caveat of, I really think we do need to discuss further and potentially take action in regard to employee complaints, and not, not, and it doesn't sound like we will drop the ball on that, but to do that, at this point, I'd like to move that we adopt, or, the, take, move to update the procedures portion of our board operating procedures as described in the second paragraph of the proposed, how am I trying to phrase this?
Operating procedures?
Operating procedures, as presented.
A motion by Mr. Ben, second by Dr. Payne, any further comments, questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries as presented. That's going to bring us to Item D, executive session. We will be tabling Item D1 due to time constraints, and we will move to D2. The board will meet in executive session to deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee. Executive session deliberations will be held pursuant to the Personnel Matters closed meeting, exception to the Texas Open Meetings Act as set forth, Section 551.074 of the Texas Government Code. And then we will come back in the open session. Thank y'all for being here. All right, we are back in open session, obviously, Item E, open session, that has been tabled, brings us back to Item F, adjournment. Thank y'all for being here.